The mayor is absent tonight. So at the mayor pro tem, I will run the meeting. We're going to start off with the invitation and ask Bill Wayne Muller, a friend of the city, to do the invitation to go to say it.
If you will pray with me. Let each of us in our own way give thanks for the opportunities that we have to live in this wonderful country. The blessings of being able to participate in government, redirect poor government, and install better government is something that many citizens in this world are not allowed to do. We fortunately here in the city of Walnut Grove have been allowed to voice our concerns, voice our opinions, and choose leaders that we think will be beneficial to not only the city, but to all of its citizens. We thank each of you for participating this evening, and we pray that you will get blessed by this meeting and all of the future for the city of Walnut Grove. Amen.
That's my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to apologize to those people at home. We're being recorded on FaceTime Live, fortunately, but people are having internet issues and so a lot of people who are equally unemployed will not be able to see it tonight. So again, you can't go FaceTime Live enough in US right now. So the roll call. Erica Miles is here, Linda Gilbren's in attendance, and Stephanie Moncrief, we're all here. Along with our attorneys Tony Powell and Jay Crowley, and our city clerk, Julie Mello. Agenda approval, this next time adopted. Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
Last second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You can answer. And next is the installation of elected officials. Tony Powell, our city attorney, graciously accepted the role of the person giving the oaths, and he was unanimous choice by everybody. So a first is me. Something that somebody suggested, who is actually, Maxine suggested it. She would like to bring up her family member with her personal Bible and have Tony read the oath.
Check out.
And so we're all going to be with that. And my family's going to come on, husband Bobby, my son William, and my mom, Tommy.
So it is what the mayor just described. Mayor Elect has described as a tradition is to have a family member in the Bible. It is the place your left hand on that Bible and raise your right hand is the norm. What we're doing is required by the organizational meeting of the minutes, meeting as required of the charter. And in the charter, there's a specific oath that's set out that they have to take. And it's a solemn event. To violate your oath of office is what you see mostly for public officials to get in trouble for. And so when you raise your hand, this is a solemn occasion. The other thing that it does from the charter standpoint is it's the is the transition of authority from one elected official to the other. So she stands as Mayor Elect and Mayor Pro Tem right now, but when she says, "Come out," and so everybody can hear, "I do," then she will be the mayor of the city of Walnut Grove. So there's an oath that is in your charter, which is a short oath, which I will give the mayor. And then there is a long oath that is required, that you do not want to hear. And so it will be signed off on as she completes the oath as required by the charter. Now, here is your oath. I, Stephanie Fox Moncrief, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of mayor of the city of Walnut Grove, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. So help me God, if you agree and swear that, say, "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is the swearing in of Rachel Michelle Davis.
I would like to be able to hold my eyes for four minutes, and my husband Alex to watch it.
Stand right here.
There we go. And a right hand. Left on the Bible, right hand up.
Yes, sir.
Now, I, Rachel Michelle Davis, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of a member of the city council of the city of Walnut Grove, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. So help me God, if you'll do that, say, "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. And last, how you do this, so I can ask you, should I say the plan?
And I have, here are which are joining me. A former.
Other one?
Former county.
Very good. You're right. You're right. I, Maxine McPlannigan, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of a member of the city council of the city of Walnut Grove, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. If you will do that, say, "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you would, please join me in welcoming Ms. McPlannigan and Ms. Davis up to the dais as new council members. Ace, yes? Ace. Continue on the meeting. The next up is the consent of the agenda, if you're in motion for approval or... I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? So the agenda consent agenda was approved. Next, I'm going to ask the planning and zoning commissioner to come up. This is Megan Reagan. And Megan, if you notice, the board is talking to you.
There are no new updates for planning and zoning. Nothing has happened. But I did want everybody to know that we're not having a December meeting, but our next meeting will be January 18th, here at 7:00. Is Dana here tonight? She could make it. There's some information that she left that she can...
Dana wanted to let us know. So the food pantry at the library, she was emptying and refilling daily. She's incredibly grateful for the support of the citizens of Walnut Grove. So if you're in your heart, go ahead and help out the food pantry. Santa was going to, is in town, I guess, yeah, tonight. Santa's at the library tonight. And she has a bunch of events coming up this month. Looks very busy, as usual. So if you're interested, you can always go on the website and check out that information or after the meeting that you have up here if you're interested. Always call Library again and say, "Well, they're always very helpful." Informing everybody about what's going on. At this time, we're going to go ahead and you pull the comments. If anybody has anything to add or say or make a statement or anything like that, you're welcome to come up at this time. Nothing? Oh, come on up. If you would, come over to the podium and state your name and your address, please.
It's my... My hair's gorgeous. Hello. Hey, everybody. Hi. I am Jessica Jamerson. Stay in Island Lake. So six one, head of the track. How are you guys? We have a lot of traffic coming through, especially in the morning, so my kids are getting off on school buses. And trying to figure out who gets speed bumps. Something going on in there to stop this traffic because you know it's going to get worse as we grow. And these streets are very popular right now, our neighborhood. So that's a major concern. And outside of that, is there any other... Is it planning and zoning, any other development going on along the front of Island Lake right now?
Not sure where. And this usually isn't an end question and answer.
Okay.
But if you want, at the end, right now, I'm not aware of any other developments.
Yes.
They are putting in a deceleration lane across the street, you guys?
Okay.
But nothing else has been promoted out there right now.
Oh, and we got other than that? Oh, and I take that back. For my corner invitation, there's Sandy Creek in Island. If that could be turned into four-way stops. Because even with the new construction on Phase Three, there's only down our street. That's a lot of kids in our neighborhood. We are surprised every Halloween how many kids we have. I think it's always quiet. We have tons. So we need those stop signs and speed bumps or something that our neighborhood is safer. So we don't have any traffic this time.
Could you think of any of the particular ones?
I appreciate that.
Well, that's it.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Ma'am, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What was the streets that you were questioned four-way stop on?
Sandy Creek Drive and Island Lake. I think one more, I think.
Sandy Creek, not Sandy Creek.
Yes, they have. I think it's the only... It's the only four-way in our subdivision right now. Can I leave my phone over here?
Yes, ma'am. Got it? Is there anybody else who would like to come up or say anything?
Hi, I'm Maxine, also on the case law.
Yes.
Absolutely, that's 249 Overlook Road. Yes.
Thank you.
And, no problem. And again, the speed tables, she said. And then also the street sign, I was still missing the street sign. We need to... And then also, from what I ever stood before, they were starting off as three amenities were supposed to be done. So we're still in a lot of traffic. So if we can maybe team up with builder and find out what's going on there. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to old business. And if the budget adjustment, everybody up here has been given records or documents about anything that is going to be, we're going to be giving this today's up tonight. And given the opportunity to ask questions or anything like that, okay? The budget adjustment is done because we are required to stay below 3% over any budget items that we had put in place in our budget. The fine item. And so we've had to adjust some funds to live around to make sure we're in the regulation set up at the state. And so that's what this budget adjustment is all about. Something that has been done over the past four years. It's not out of order or unusual. And that's what we're going to be making a position on today. Is there a motion?
I made a motion to approve the budget adjustment.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
I would like to acknowledge your motion. It is a budget discussion starting year 2022, '23 versus 2023, '24.
Thank you. Okay.
I will deny a motion to include approval of the budget adjustment notating that it is for the 2022 to 2023 final two budgets.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has passed. Budget adjustment for 2022, 2023 is approved. Next up, it's a new business and we are going to elect a mayor pro tem. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
I would like to nominate Eric Alonos for that position.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You didn't ask, but I thought it. The election of the mayor pro tem is Erica Miles. Thank you. Next, we move on to the solicitor services request for increasing fees. I'm going to give a little background on this. The solicitor who serves on our municipal court just once a month has not received a raise in eight years. Originally, when he started out, he was being paid $400, and in eight years, it has never gone up. He has requested an increase of $350 per month to meet the needs in advance that he has in running an office and the cost of immigration and whatnot. All of the council members have received this documentation in advance and were given the opportunity to ask any questions or do any research on that. At this time, we're going to ask for a motion. I motion that we approve the solicitor's request for a fee increase to exempt offense at any amount of the stipulation in this charter to the city. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm assuming we've looked at the... I failed to do it myself, so I'm asking. We failed to look at the budget to see if we'd be covered for the rest of the year. So would this be current full months?
Yes, it could be starting January 1st, 2024. And the budget does allow for it. We're going to have to move some money. But our general servant is very healthy, and we are going to report this. And since the request has not been made in eight years or seven years, then... We also did research for the other cities and we're back. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
The motion has passed and the motion solicitor services request for increasing fees in the amount specified by the memo has been passed. Next, we will go on to judge services request for increasing fees. We should now, one end of the... But our judge also has not received a raise of any time in seven. He started out seven years ago making $500 a session, and he has asked for an increase of $500 bringing his monthly amount up to $1,000. And again, council has given us this documentation, given the opportunity to ask questions or contact any other cities, do their research. And so at this point, I will ask for a motion.
I make that motion to please increase the salary for the judge services per session from $500 to $1,000.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You can answer again. In a motion to increase the judge services request for increasing fees for $500 to $1,000 for them, has been approved. When we did the agenda's approval before, it was my escape and I've got to take off the fee increase for Lakeview Environmental. What I have done is asked them to come in to the next work session. They're the company who helps us with our sewer plant. They work very closely with Brian, and has been very highly regarded. And so we're bringing them in as new people come to us who have not been in positions before. And it's very important that we meet those people. And so I spoke to the person, Chris Thomas, and I asked him if he could hold off until the work session that we're going to do at the beginning of January. He was fine with that, had no issue whatsoever. He would say he'd be happy to come in, meet the council, answer any questions, and kind of give us an idea of what he does. So that's what we're going to do. So I'm going to hold off on anything on the fee increase for Lakeview and environmental. And I apologize for not taking the opportunity before. Tony, I'm sorry, is there anything I need to do in this kind of a situation? Or can I just go ahead and take it off? Or do I have to? I'm asking.
Unless there's an objection from other members of council.
Is there a question? Is everybody okay with that?
Normally, we would have amended it in June at the beginning, but I know tonight's not a normal night, so...
Exactly. You're right. So I hope we didn't know that and can't do that inside. I apologize. Let's go ahead and move on for our reports with our public works manager. Brian, thank you for coming.
Okay, mayor and councilor. We got our Christmas decorations up in town and also our Christmas banners are up also in town. And our tree lighting event was a success last one. And our Christmas trees come on all times of year. Our bathrooms are winterized and our public bathroom is in part of winterized with winter closed up. And also, our sewer plant is partially winterized. And I think it's time that you might have any questions. But anyway, one of our crosswalk signs is up at the high school. It's a pair of wheels. And we're kind of testing them to see how our work is moving this first time we built them. And before we move forward with the others.
Okay.
So we just got one of this one.
That's great.
So we're working with those and just, you know, working on anything we might do wrong.
Absolutely.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Brian, I wanted to let you know tomorrow, I am going to come into the office and Brian has invited me to ride around town with him. We're probably not going to do it tomorrow. I'm not going to put you on the spot like that. But I also encourage council, if you have not ridden around the city, if you're not familiar with the operations, I encourage you to get into Brian and ride around. We have a lot to teach and we have a lot to learn. So when you have a minute, fix them on, do that, see how you can do it, perhaps.
I agree, that would be a good time to see the big overview of specialty public work headquarters and workloads and what the guys actually take on too. And most of our own Brian will come in. They're good guys. They weren't available, so we got a good crew down there.
Great, that's great. I'll be in the office tomorrow, probably around 9:30. Just come in and say hello and everything. And if you guys are available, I'm going to bring some chicken biscuits if you'd like to come by. Sorry to get so informed. It doesn't matter. Brian, a couple days, so I might want to get you up, okay? All right, so thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Okay. We usually have a report by the city court, but unfortunately, we had some online issues, computer issues, at the office today also. And so we're not going to do that tonight. Kimberly usually always has those, but we have a computer glitch. Unfortunately, we did get it, so it's no problem. We'll go ahead and make sure we do the report for, at the next meeting, all right? We'll do both of them. Okay. And the next one is for mayor report. I really don't have a lot to report. Here is a ton of stuff that I've been learning about and I need to continue to learn about. Fortunately, there are mayors who are in place who have reached out to me and are willing to help me. Brian has offered up his self. I've worked with Kimberly a little bit over the past couple of weeks and learned a few things. And of course, our attorneys, Tony Powell and Jay Crowley, are always helpful. And so I'm looking forward to that a lot. I've had the chance to talk with everybody up here before tonight and kind of get a feel for where everybody is. I think there's great things coming for the city of Walnut Grove and will continue on in the fashion that we are a great city and will just keep going that way. Work hard, do our best. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It means the world to me to see you all here. And we're just going to do the work. Just going to do the work, that's all we can do. Now, it's the town hall part. Does anybody have anything else they want to add or say? Or this is usually not on the record, but I am going to be talking with council about that to see if this is something we do want to have on the record in the future. So if you have anything that you want to add, it's time to come up now. No? Or you can just be in your seat.
Okay.
Okay.
I hear like every day around 4:00. I don't know if it's on Park Street or the photo section, but right behind my house, these dogs are like barking in like pain every day around 4:00.
I'll talk to you afterwards.
And I don't know if they're being beat or if they're just being knocked.
All right, well, we can talk about that afterwards, definitely, okay? Anything else, anybody?
I'm glad you're here.
Yeah. We're going to do a council comment and we will start with Linda Gilbren. I don't have anything to say. Rachel?
Thank you guys so much. I hope that I make you proud and do the right, very best right things to help our city grow in responsible ways and just continue moving forward. I'm excited to work with all of these strong councilmen here with our awesome working team and all of the staff for this city. I'm very excited to get to work.
Thank you. Erica Miles?
I am thrilled to serve with you ladies up here, all of you. I think that our city is going to experience some amazing teamwork and I am just thrilled that I can be a part of it.
Maxine? Maxine?
Well, I did toe all the way down the line here, but I also say two, thank you to all the citizens for putting some trust in me. I hope that you find that I am trustworthy and that I will do the job that you expect of me, but I also want to let you know, come to me with anything you have. I got pretty big shoulders. I don't take things personally to hawk it out with you or send you somebody to hawk it out with. Let me add that to it. I'm glad you're all here, hope you will return.
Okay. Thank you, Maxine. We don't have an executive session tonight. So we will go ahead and have the shorts meeting on record ending here at 7:37. Thank you all for coming. Could I have a motion? I make a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Now we can go.